Good evening. It's the Milford Planning Board of Tuesday, March 4th. First thought of the business is the minutes of the last meeting. Motion to accept.
Second.
We're moved in second to accept the minutes of the last meeting. Any further discussion here or none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous of five. Thank you. We have 181P for this evening.
359, 361 Purchase.
Yep.
There were two variances, as it turns out, granted on the two lots involved. Both were granted. The decisions are attached in your packet and the plan's endorseable as submitted. The only thing that hasn't worked out is that I'm one marker short, as it turns out. So somebody's going to have to share. It's endorseable as submitted.
And we all have to sign that this is our land?
Yeah, well, no. Larry can't sign anymore.
Yeah, three of you.
Oh, no?
At least three or four of you at least.
Signature wasn't clear enough for them to accept.
Isn't legible enough. It's not consistent enough.
Depending on who you get as a registry, it's unbelievable what they'll turn away. But in that mind, it's totally possible.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
We need to...
Any further discussion on this?
Yeah, I wanted to know who's going to check to see if the boxwood plants are going to be alive that are in the zoning decision.
Building official.
Really? How long does he have to check that for? Do the boxes have to be perpetually kept alive? Are those under perpetual care?
Move to endorse the 81P plan for 359 Purchase Street.
Second.
We're moved in second. We endorsed the 81P plan for...
359.
359, 361 Purchase Street. Any further discussion here or none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous of five. Do you want to share the pen?
Wait a second while they sign.
Next is that is we have amended site plan for 269, 271 Main Street.
Yep, this is amended site plan. The applicant's requesting approval to establish a used motor vehicle sales use on the property. The ZBA granted a required special permit at their meeting on 1-925. The recorded decision is attached in your packet. There are a few conditions, but it appears they've been indicated on the plan. Specifically, the applicant proposes the outdoor display of no more than six used cars for sale at any one time. The existing garage repair area will contain one small office and two service bays. The off-street parking requirements appear to be met, and the existing parking area is to be restriked, as noted on the plan. There are no additions proposed to the structure, and the existing hair salon is to remain in the building. I recommend approval subject to relevant agency comments. In the packet after the decision, fire chief had no comments. The highway surveyor found it satisfactory. Water department saw no conflicts. And I think that was the last one we got. Saying John's here to have questions. I assume you can answer questions, huh?
Just for the record, John's a rebuilds courier. Larry did have one comment about a freestanding sign, so we did have that added to the plan. That's the large copy that's in front of you folks. I did bring five copies and one original. Did you have to do that? I think we run it through.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Just a couple of quick questions. Obviously, yeah, the freestanding sign will meet town bylaws.
Yep.
And then I know one of the other...
We've got to make sure those plants...
Used cars sales that came in the past. We said that those spots should be either striped or designated to show that they were, I guess... Are there any designations to show that those six spots are designated?
Currently, we don't have anything other than what's being shown on the site plan for it. But if you wanted to have like an extra stripe or something put in to make them like a box or something...
So no signage here?
No. But the applicant, Marcelo, is here with us tonight. If we can obviously discuss anything here or if we just like to condition anything, we can tack that on at that point. Marcelo, would you have any preference on signage or any like striking on the ground for something like that?
And I guess I'd look to my fellow board members. I know, like I said, we did that for a past applicant, and so it's not necessarily, like I said, a bylaw, but it was more of a precedent that we kind of set forward at Mancini's.
For...
Yeah.
For wrong grades.
Yeah. So again, I just...
Yeah, I think there was like a dash line around it.
I want to be consistent with our...
I think it's extremely helpful to have it designated separately for zoning enforcement and just, you know, enforcing how many...
It's okay for a small lot, but you get a big lot, big lot or something. That's why we always had the customer, we always had the customer pocket spaces signed rather than...
Instead, yeah.
Yeah.
But in this case, it's kind of the other way around.
Yeah.
But I think on the last one, it was a fat dashed line around the area so that everybody can tell.
It was right on the plan, and I think it was on the plan mostly, the fat. But anyway...
And we asked for that, that's why.
You definitely asked for something, either signage or...
So again, just from a matter of consistency, that would be the one...
Can I say something? I'm the owner of the property. We do have spots that will be designated. I don't know if they were... I think they were specifically worked out, the six designated spots exactly. I just don't know if they were labeled on the plan.
They're labeled on the plan. What we're talking about is permanently out at the site, having some differentiation between those spots and the others.
They probably will because then I'll have signs for myself as well for the salon just so that I don't have people parking in his spots and that he doesn't have the same for mine.
Okay, anything else?
If the owner wants to do that and we want to approve it this way, why don't we do it as spots to be designated in the field or on the site as either is hatched or as otherwise selected by the owner or whatever.
Designated as either for the auto or the car place.
Designated through signage or through hatchet.
Sounds like a motion to me.
For the...
Okay, for the auto sales locations.
Auto sales.
I got a question too.
Sure.
If you're coming in, you're going left to go around to the other parking space. There's an area there that's not paved at all.
In the back corner?
In the back, yeah. If you're coming out directly from the garage door, if you're coming out straight.
Okay.
The pavement only goes so far, then you've got no pavement, and then it's a way to get into the two parking spaces there. So that should be paved, that whole area should be paved. And I realize I don't want to hold it up because of the time of year and it is, but...
Well, you've got 24 feet there that'll be... I mean, it's wide enough.
Yeah.
According to this.
Yeah, it's wide enough, but it's not paved.
Yeah, there's pavement there.
I assume the dash line is the edge of pavement.
That's what we do have shown for edge of pavement?
Yeah.
And that's almost about 25 feet to the...
I just drove over it, and that's not pavement there. There's no pavement here.
There's no pavement here?
Right where the, see where the granite curve in the ends?
Yep.
That area, that area there right after the granite curve and towards the back, there's no pavement. If it is, it's, it isn't worth anything anyway. I just drove over 15 minutes ago, 20 minutes ago.
Yeah, the pavement should be as per what's shown here. I mean, if we need to...
Upgrade the pavement.
Yeah, if the pavement needs to be upgraded or whatever, then yeah, as long as it follows what's here. I have no problem with it.
Can we require that they resurface it so that it's nice, solid?
Well, you don't have to surface the whole thing.
Just those areas?
Repair, at least repair that area if...
Paving.
And get it stocked up so I can see whether it was made...
Why don't we have Liz go out? I mean, we can approve it based on, based on them having pavement as per what's shown on the plans, and then Liz can go out and check it, and if it needs to be upgraded, it can be upgraded.
Okay.
Pavement to be upgraded as determined by the town engineer?
Yep. Would there be any specific requirements for the new pavement or...
Check with the town engineer.
Be fair. You will be fair, right?
Yeah. Stuff to tell what's out there too. I mean, it's going to be a decision when you're out there. I don't think...
As long as there's enough pavement that it holds together, it's fine.
Yeah. So I'll hold off on signing the Mylar until Liz verifies what's up with that.
Do we have to make them come back?
Is there a motion?
Yeah.
Did you, somebody make the motion?
I took, I believe it was what Chris said.
Okay.
And acted as if it were a motion, and I seconded it.
Okay, and then we're going to add on...
But it should be subject to the town engineer's review of the pavement and upgrades as she determines. Can we do, are you guys okay with them having occupancy or whatever before the pavement?
Yeah, because...
Well, you have to, yeah.
Yeah, actually, this time of year.
I just wanted to make sure.
No, I don't want to hold anybody up by no means, but it's something that's, it's going to be looked into for sure.
Yep, good catch, babe.
Okay, moved?
I seconded.
You seconded?
Yeah, subject to the...
Who moved, who seconded?
Chris moved.
Chris moved on.
We'll blame it on you.
I'll move to approve the amended site plan for 269, 271 Main Street with the provisions of designating the six spaces and also based on the input from the town engineer on the questionable paved area.
Okay, second. We're moved in second. Any further discussion here or none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous of five. Moving along. Now we go to 100 Central Street.
All right, amended site plan, 100 Central Street. The applicant requests amended site plan approval to authorize a change of use on the subject property. Site is the former catering business located at the northwest corner of Central Street and Bragg Slip. In 2020, the planning board approved a change of use for the second floor of the building to office and warehousing space for an energy consulting and auditing firm that periodically conducts contractor training sessions. Occupancy of the basement and first floor of the building were then only vaguely noted as warehouse and office slash warehouse respectively on the floor plans. There are only 11 total parking spaces provided on the site. The current proposed use of the basement is a distribution facility for optical mark recognition screen printing products and is consistent with the previously approved use for the basement area. The addition of the indoor recreation skateboard park area within the same space is the focus, is the primary focus of this application. Without a clear description of how this proposed additional use will function, it's difficult to determine parking compliance. So I recommend amended site plan be approved subject to relevant agency comments, but only if the above noted issues can be adequately addressed and the property owner submits a valid updated site plan, which we still haven't seen. The fire department, as you see in the packet, had two questions. Will any obstructions or obstacles be placed to the rooms where skating is available such as ramps or structures? And will any walls or partitions be added? Changes to the building may affect the fire protection systems. To my knowledge, he hasn't gotten a response. And there's, and there was the applicant's email responding to that. So it talks about adding the ramps and some of that, some of the graphics are contained in the packet. Then John Erickson had tried to reach out on his email saying, do the people running this skate park know that this is a change of use under the building code? And they'll need to get a certificate of occupancy for that use. So I don't know where that stands yet. Water department sees no conflict, and that was the last comment I got. So I think David's here. If you have questions.
Just really quick to address the email communication. We did communicate both of the fire department and John Erickson. I think originally this, where it talked about like the proposed use in the photos, wasn't submitted to the fire department. We had sent it to them, and then John Erickson, we went back and forth just discussing that, yeah, we do understand, you know, the planning board process, sort of the occupancy process. And I assured them that we're not doing any construction down there, just placing these ramps, you know, in the building. And the skate area is just over 500 square feet, so don't think like a gigantic skate park. What I had told John Erickson is, you know, on average, we'll probably have three or four people included with John skating there. It could be a little bit more, could be a little bit less. I don't know how often you guys drive by 100 Central Street. The parking lot's basically empty 90% of the time. There's one warehouse worker during the day, but, so we really don't have much demand on the parking as of now. Yeah, any questions?
Is the site accessible? Handicap accessible?
No, the basement's not handicap accessible. Yeah, I mean, no, it wouldn't, or skate park is not really a handicap activity.
Have you talked to the building inspector about that? And is how he's going to rule on that? It's open to the public?
Because, yeah, we had the sports courts...
That was by membership.
By membership, yeah, but he, that owner had to go through...
He only did because that was by membership, but it wasn't open to the public.
But he had to go through the whole client's options, right? Or the waivers, I should say.
He had to go before the Boston board.
That's really, that's something you...
Are you talking about the AAB?
Yes.
ADA.
You need to check before you go too far with this. I have no idea. I mean, this is regardless of whether it's only skaters there, if there's, you know, if somebody wanted to go and watch, it's open to the public. They can't do that. I don't know how the building inspector is going to...
Yeah, John is saying similar. You'd actually have to have a membership and like sign up and pay monthly.
Still have to go through...
You have to go through, yeah, and then...
To prove to them that...
How are you going to do it? So I wouldn't go, I wouldn't go too far without going down that path and straightening that out.
I would reach out to the owner to the new sports facility by Planet Fitness, and they might be able to guide you in what he did. But I know that there's definitely, we had letters of waiver that we emailed from AAB in the AAB for that very reason. I think it's going to be important.
The pleasure of the board.
I guess a couple of the questions, as you're moving along with that, you know, I think it's a great idea for the, for the space that if it's being unused, especially during the wintertime, and I know that, you know, they're looking to get a skate park here in Milford also, which I think is a great idea. My only question, maybe look over to you, Larry, is something like this, which would be considered more of a recreation or sporting, does that conform to that area in the bylaws? Just to ensure that, or do they need to go through to get a special permit based on the location and kind of what it's being used for?
No, this is, this is still, as it turns out, in an IA zone. Let's see.
I believe that's right.
Okay, just want to make sure on that. And that's based on what, kind of what John was saying with the change of occupancy, occupancy from the board commissioner?
Yeah, commercial recreation indoor is allowed, outdoor isn't, but indoor is, so, yeah.
All right, good. Just want to make sure on that.
So the only other thing I could see if there's a concern is, you know, continue it to...
I don't know that it changes anything that we're going to do.
Doesn't change anything, yeah.
I'm trying to put that out to the applicant, saying, you know, you don't want to spend any more money till you straighten out those issues.
We agree.
But I don't, I don't think it's, they're obviously not going to do any, no one's putting an elevator in here to get in if they, if they tell them to do that for people. So I, I don't see why we couldn't approve it. I don't, I don't necessarily have any issues.
Or I guess you could approve it and they could still deny it.
Right, exactly.
Wouldn't make any difference.
Well, they're going to need a CO from the building official who's doing the AAB stuff, so...
Yes. I just, I'm just putting it out there so they're aware of the issues.
I appreciate that. I wouldn't, I didn't think that. I mean, we went to the AAB for the second floor clear result, the contractors, and they approved that, you know, because these are like HVAC workers, you know?
Yeah, you don't, again, it's not our call, and until you have that piece of paper in your hand, you're not guaranteed of anything. So it's, you'd rather be spending the money there than later on or having somebody after the fact say, hey, I wanted to go down there and you didn't provide for access and...
Yeah, my kid was skating or something, yeah.
One other thing is regarding parking. I don't really foresee parking being utilized. I would say that probably most of the clientele there is going to come in and come out on skateboards based on the age group of that. So that, that part of it, although there is some questions there, I'm willing to kind of move forward without any, you know, specific information and usage information on the parking spot myself.
Yeah, I don't think the space is big enough to think that there's going to be, even if there were, that you're going to pack enough people into that kind of space to be able to...
Plus the, it's more of like an hour usage or like 3:30 to 7:30 or whatever.
Yeah, and the kids aren't going to drive.
Yeah. Is that a motion?
Mom might drop them off, but that's not parking.
No, I couldn't, I couldn't tell.
No. Make a motion, approve the amended site plan for 100 Central Street?
Second.
We're moved in second. We approve the amended site plan for 100 Central Street. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous of five. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next one. You've got 110th South Main Street.
Yes, this is an amended site plan. RIN Advisors LLC. The applicant requests amended site plan approval to relocate four electric charging stations that were previously approved on the subject property in 2023. Zoning bylaw has since been amended in May of 2024 to provide for electric vehicle charging stations in existing parking lots under section 3.4.7.2 of the zoning bylaw. This new section provides, and I quoted in the report, for EV charging stations may be installed in existing parking lots provided the total number of existing parking spaces complies with the off-street parking requirements and the number of EV charging stations not exceed 10% of the total. So in that regard, it's in compliance. So it generally meets the zoning provisions. However, the drawing submitted is not an engineered site plan. It does not accurately locate the property lines, the street right-of-way lines on the plan, on a plan that is drawn to scale. The detail of the charging stations and other items shown on the sketch aerial that was submitted should all be indicated on a new site plan, an engineered plan. So I recommend approval subject to all the relevant departmental comments and subject to having an actual site plan being provided. Fire department, primary comment was that the new equipment should have adequate vehicle protection. The drawing appears to show bollards, but the print's very small on the, on the submittal. Again, having an accurate plan that shows the property lines is going to help in this regard as well.
If I could say something?
Well, let me finish reading these.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
The water department had no conflict, and I thought we got one from Highway, but I don't see it. So I guess, I guess that was that. So, John, right?
Yes.
John's here can answer questions.
I just wanted to say I dropped off a roll of prints. I had 10 of the large sheets, the blowups for everything. I dropped it off at the office on Friday.
Yeah, but it's the same aerial that's fuzzy and is not on site plan.
This is what he wants. This was what was, I apologize, I didn't find it today, or I didn't look for it until today. But this was what was submitted with the last one. This is, shows the lot with the, with the property lines. And the reason that he's specifically looking for something like this is because there is a five-foot-wide highway easement around here, and it looks like the transformer or something is going to be in that easement, so you can't have it in that easement.
Right, okay.
Which is why it's a good idea to have an engineered site plan.
Yeah. You can have, you can have this, and then you can either contact...
Did GNH do that one?
GNH did this.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
That way they can just switch the spaces and it'd be...
Right.
So that was a 2023 plan, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't have, I don't have any issues with the change, but I think we should, you know, we should see the plan and make sure, one, that you see a plan that actually has a transformer or not, and a highway easement, and also the address of the fire chief's comments in terms of protection of the equipment. I make a motion that we continue to...
Eighteenth?
Yeah, well...
That's the next meeting, so I...
I'm just wondering whether GNH can get it done by that time. That's what I'm going to do.
Literally...
I know there isn't much.
It can be done.
That's the eighteenth?
Make a motion that we continue until our next meeting, March 18th.
Second. We don't have, we got a joint meeting that day?
Yep, they can be...
Yeah, we could bring them on first.
Because there's already, well, there's already some other items.
Okay.
So they can all wait until, until the joint meeting's done.
Okay.
Otherwise, they're looking at...
They're not going to dig and put anything in, so it's not holding anything up, but...
No, no, we're still, we're going to have to wait for National Grid to get the approvals, and maybe we'll get it in the ground by October.
They'll have it by next March.
Yeah, if I'm lucky.
Okay.
I have a project that was installed nine months ago, and they haven't come to turn the power on. Everything's done, and they haven't even flipped the switch, so it's hard to even wait.
Well, you could do it till the March 4th meeting and then...
We have a motion to continue it?
I seconded it.
Second, moved in second to continue until March 18th.
Okay.
Any further discussion? There are none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then it's a five. Thank you.
Very great, thank you.
Okay, got a ZBA special permit for 284 West Street.
Yep, I just buried that one. This is for T-Man Properties LLC, the long-awaited application for special permit. The applicant's request special permit approval to establish a contractor's yard use on the subject property. Contractor's yard uses require special permit from the ZBA in the CC district in which the property is located. Specifically, the applicant proposes the redevelopment of the site of the former tradesman tavern that was raised after being destroyed by fire in 2021. The proposal is to construct a 50 by 95-foot warehouse and office building with associated parking on the subject property. The driveway and access along West Street Route 140 frontage reflect the previously approved configuration.
It's an easy bar, not Helen.
This results in only one driveway with the restoration of the remaining frontage to be a curbed landscape buffer between the front parking lot and the street. to be a curbed landscape buffer between the front parking lot and the street. Adequate off-street parking is provided, and all other zoning requirements appear to be met, save for the issuance of the special permit. Therefore, recommend a favorable report before to the ZBA. Site plan is attached, but I also have a 11-by-17 print, that's a little bit easier to read. But we've been waiting for this for, what, two years at least? So they're used to running the site, and I'd recommend favorable reports. Don't say anything.
It's just easier to read.
I just can't resist.
Thank you.
They won't even let you say your name.
No.
Can you still get the mud pies in there?
So much of the site layout was previously approved on the proposed redevelopment of the Tradesman, but that didn't happen, so it's, from a site plan and drainage and development standpoint, it's, it's well on its way to compliance already, so
Question, when you start with these new structures, warehouses and office, that's, this is on well water down in that area, if I recall?
Yeah.
Sprinkler systems, and how, are they required, and how are they fed?
It's going to be 7,500 square feet.
Yeah, it's not big enough.
Gotcha, thank you.
Conveniently.
Why, yes.
Met the magic number, yeah. And that was one of the more recent zoning amendments to the CC zone, was to specifically allow for contractor's yards, and this was one of the sites that was, it was intended to benefit. Was it?
Where the sewer ends, I think it must go, must be at Asylum Street, and then goes up Asylum
Yeah, I
On 140, isn't it?
No, sewer stops at Hopedale Street.
Hopedale Street.
That's why there's
Dutch, excuse me, Dutch.
Yeah, I was surprised. Everything else is fed from
Real porn back.
I know that, I know that.
I brought this up, because I was surprised that there was a septic system, I would have thought there'd be sewer along this road.
No, the septic, the septic system is in the ground, and it was previously approved.
Uh, no sewer, no water.
Okay, and Larry, I'm sorry, I didn't
The septic system is already in the ground, it's shown on the plan, it was previously approved when the tavern was
They're going to come back for site plan review anyway, right?
Yes, yeah, just need a favorable
Just curiosity.
Yeah, I understand.
We send a favorable to the ZBA.
Second.
We moved in second, and we send a favorable recommendation to the zoning board. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous of five.
See, it works much better.
Motion in the evening?
That'd be me. Motion to adjourn.
Second, moved in second, we adjourn, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous of five. Good night.